8:31 a.m. on June the 4th. It already feels pretty hot and humid out there, so appreciate this air conditioning while you can. We start this meeting with our Chaplain Prayer and Pledges, so if Chaplain Art Mavado would please come forward.
Good morning. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Almighty God, you have created all people in all creation, and we give you thanks for your creation. We give you thanks for this day that you have given us, and we ask that you would just open our hearts and our minds to be able to do the best we can for your glory. Open our hearts and our eyes to see your community as you would have us see it, and bless our leaders in all they say they do, in all that they say and do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
We only have one proclamation this morning, so just a minute, we'll start with that. Keep San Angelo Beautiful, K-SAB, was initiated by Councilmember Harry Thomas and city officials in 2018 to address relevant community needs and foster a love of the environment. In February 2020, strategic plans were implemented to create awareness and maintain clean, green, and beautiful spaces through art, science, and education. K-SAB has hosted hundreds of events in San Angelo, including household hazardous waste drop-offs, trash pickups, recycling tires, art murals, installed picnic tables and benches, induction of K-SAB junior ambassadors who pledged to be litter-free, speaking engagements, and published a book, "ABC: 26 Ways to Keep San Angelo Beautiful." They have also been featured in San Angelo Lifestyles and Texas Municipal League magazines. In addition, they have received numerous awards and recognition from state of Texas officials, including Keep Texas Beautiful, Beautify Texas Awards for Public Education and Outreach 2023, and Outstanding Program Tires to Go 2024. State of Texas Alliance for Recycling, Texas Environmental Leadership Awards for Extraordinary Recycling Special Event 2023, and Outstanding Public Outreach 2023. Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, Texas Environmental Excellence Award, Civic Community Tires to Go 2024. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of San Angelo, do hereby proclaim and recognize Keep San Angelo Beautiful for their dedicated efforts and commitment to create awareness, preserve, and protect the environment in San Angelo, Texas. Thank you. Let me present you with this, and would you like to speak?
Sure. So, we want to thank City Council, Mayor Gunter, and your team for your support. Especially, we want to thank Mr. Bob Solis for an amazing start under Neighborhood and Family Services and our operations team, Mr. Shane Kelton. We are finishing strong with support from Solid Waste, Street &amp; Bridge. Want to give a special shout-out to our Economic Development Team, who has housed our amazing organization, and without them, we could have never done the work that we've done. Michael, again, your support means everything to us, and we appreciate everything that you've done to create awareness around our organization, that we've worked tirelessly to put the most beautiful part of our city to the community and our guests and visitors.
Come up here. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, let's go have a picture. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes.
Bear with me a minute, because my blood pressure is really high from all the stress I've been under for the past four years. My name is Jackie Chestnut. I'm 67 years old. I've been through 18 surgeries. Since 1998, I've been legally disabled. I've had three artificial joints, an artificial back, and 17 other surgeries for various things. I moved with my husband, who had dementia and who was completely disabled in 2018, to Marble Falls and shut down our business. And then, by the grace of God, I made many surgeries and moved back here in 2020 with my demented husband to try to finish our lives at our beautiful ranch in Knickerbocker, Texas. When I returned to our ranch with my husband, my husband was abducted from my home in October of 2020 into the city of San Angelo, and for the next 14 months, I searched for my husband through every agency, every person, every sheriff, every police, every person here, every district attorney, every single person. Nobody would help me find my husband and locked him away from me in every illegal way possible. That is called elder abuse and financial exploitation. Having suffered the indignity of that, my husband died and was returned to me dead from Johnson's funeral home, where they tried to bury him without even acknowledging me. Now, can we even imagine, you all, what that would do to somebody, my precious, precious husband? So, at this point, I'm now going to discuss elder abuse and financial exploitation and the legal ramifications of these things, which are new laws put in place in '21 by our state to prevent this very thing from happening, particularly to people like ourselves who had every legal document to prevent this from happening, from a marriage license, to powers of attorneys, to wills, and everything else, which were prepared in this county and filed in this county, and then frauded by local attorneys. That is elder abuse and financial exploitation. Aaron Gregg, my husband's estranged daughter, stole the passwords from our financial accounts and got into every financial account we had and began making major transactions and changes to our financial accounts, which caused IRS fraud and all kinds of things. I went to the banks, they tried to help, and they wouldn't help stop it. I went to the police. Aaron Gregg then planned and facilitated the removal of my husband from my home, where I was caring for him on my private property, not community property, my private property, in a nursing home condition, and he was removed. Now, if you read all the elder abuse statutes in here, financial exploitation means illegal and improper use of elder or adult with disabilities, money, property, or other resources for monetary, personal, and financial gain, et cetera. I've now filed an official report with Adult Protective Services on this case to stop this and to stop this continuing, which has continued since then. And it's going to stop, and I'm going to get out of here alive.
Jamal Shumpert, Single Member District Number Two. Mayor, council members, there's a lot I have to discuss. I can't discuss it within three to five minutes, but I'll try to tackle some of this. I would like an update on the Lake Nazworthy Project. There was an article put out about where two-foot below our normal water level in Twin Buttes, and I was just wondering, I was just wondering myself, is it because we're using more water, taking more water out of our reservoir instead of putting it in? Which could also go back to a problem with the zoning board and planning commission ran a lot of variances to developers. I do believe, like, some of that stormwater, we could put back into the system if we had those curbs and gutters. But beyond that, yesterday at the zoning board of adjustment, there was quite a few interesting conversations that went on, some of which I would encourage you guys to listen to, because they're not on the same path as you are with the short-term rentals. They had the understanding that y'all were going to drop the 500-foot requirement, and instead, y'all kept it up, and that caused a lot of confusion in which they passed a short-term rental yesterday up under the old rules, which is understandable. But there are things about that board, how it's created, that causes problems. There's a lot of people on that board, I don't think they know or are knowledgeable of the things that regulate them. That's why I would say, maybe y'all should talk to them, y'all should have a meeting between each other, so that y'all can get on the same page. But beyond that, I guess, I took enough time. I would like to end on a good note by saying that Keep San Angelo Beautiful does do a great job. They do, in areas they target, I could definitely tell. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Good morning.
My name's Gil Bienes. I live at 11933 Knickerbocker Road in San Angelo, and the reason I'm here is to basically talk about the homeless situation for abandoned dogs and cats in the area. We're seeing, I work a lot with Critter Shack Agency, Rescue Agency, and we're seeing a big, big influence where people are, big uptake, where there's a lot more homeless dogs. I don't know if you're all aware of that or not, but it's becoming a real, real problem in our city. Even though I'm in the outskirts, where I live, I live out in the country, kind of, in Dove Creek, but the people are regularly dumping dogs out there every weekend, pretty much. I've got, like, eight dogs now, I'm trying to find homes for, and I see them dumping them every weekend, pretty much. So, what I would, my suggestion is to get a task force, look at some other cities for best practices, and find out what are they doing that are successful, and why can't we in San Angelo do what those other cities are doing to decrease that? I know, for instance, I moved from Oregon, I used to live in Portland, Oregon, not as good anymore, but for the Humane Society, they're number one in the nation, and they had a really, really good program there. It would be really nice to connect with them and the agencies, everybody, all of us get together, put our heads together, and let's get this problem solved, because it's becoming, you know, a real problem, and I just want to see the dogs and cats not suffer. I mean, it's going to be 107 degrees today, there's going to be a lot of dead animals on the roads today, so it should be nice to fix that problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment this morning? With no one else coming forward, we will end the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. I will ask each council member if there's an item they'd like pulled from the consent agenda. I'll start with Larry.
No ma'am.
Karen.
No ma'am.
Lucy.
No ma'am.
Harry.
No ma'am.
Tom.
Lieutenant.
Tommy.
No ma'am.
Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Harry, seconded by Tom. Public comment concerning anything on the consent agenda this morning? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving all of the items on the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed or hearing none opposed, the consent agenda is passed seven to zero. Our regular agenda, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is considered a resolution of support to end veteran homelessness, and today we have Bob Solis presenting.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
In 2023, the homelessness among veterans increased nationwide by over 7%, reaching over 35,000. Here in San Angelo, the number jumped from eight to 12, according to our 2024 point-in-time count, but the Homeless Coalition believes it's closer to 30. If you recall, the city provided ARP funds to the Housing Authority to an amount of $554,000 to renovate an apartment complex to house homeless veterans. And then, we earmarked another $100,000 for follow-up case management. With the project completed and the Homeless Coalition member organizations offering resources and programs to assist homeless veterans, the Coalition believes that we can end veteran homelessness here in San Angelo. In order to accomplish that feat, the Coalition plans to identify all homeless veterans within a 90-day period, beginning in July 1st next month. We will provide either transitional or permanent housing for all homeless veterans who want it, followed by intense case management. That's in order to transition from homelessness to permanent housing and help sustain long-term success for these individuals. We must remember that freedom is not free, and the men and women who have served in the military to keep our nation safe from foreign threats deserve access to affordable housing, and we're asking, on behalf of the Coalition, for you to support the resolution of support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Mike Burnett, the Executive Director of Conshul Valley Community Action Agency and Chair of the Conshul Valley Homeless Planning Coalition, and I'm in Council District One. I'm here in support of the Ending Homelessness Initiative. As Bob alluded to, the point-in-time count this last year identified 12 homeless vets. The other numbers on that pit count are 175 homeless, 40 chronic homeless, and then 12 veterans, and we anticipate that that is significantly higher than that due to the nature of the point-in-time count. Over the past few years, the groundwork has been laid for this initiative. As Bob said, the city has appropriated federal funds and additional funds towards this. The Housing Authority and Galilee CDC has done the work to prepare those cottages, and now it's time to put it into action. The Homeless Coalition is a network of agencies providing services to all of our homeless individuals, including our homeless veterans. Under this proposal, the Housing Authority is going to do most of the heavy lifting. They're going to be providing the point of intake, they'll be providing the case management ongoing. Other agencies like mine, CBCAA, will provide other services. We received funding from the Texas Veterans Commission and their General Assistance Funds to help veterans, low-income veterans, especially those homeless. Each Coalition agency has a part in this, big and small. If you look at the list of the members of the Coalition and you look at the services, every piece of that is going towards this and our other homeless individuals. In the future, once we solve veteran homelessness, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the city as we work to help our other homeless neighbors and find them some kind of safety and security in housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll read the resolution of support from the City of San Angelo to end veteran homelessness. Whereas homelessness among veterans has increased nationwide by over 7%, reaching 35,574 in 2023, and whereas veteran homelessness in San Angelo jumped from eight to 12 over the same period, and whereas freedom is not free, and the men and women who have served in the military to keep our nation safe from foreign threats deserve access to affordable housing, and whereas the City of San Angelo dedicated American Rescue Plan funds in the amount of $554,410 to renovate an apartment complex to house homeless veterans, and $100,000 for case management, and whereas the Council Valley Homeless Coalition member organizations provide resources and programs to assist homeless veterans. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of San Angelo City Council. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
As one of three veterans up here, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. The second item on our agenda today is the first reading, a public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter One, General Provisions, Article 1.09, Taxation, Division Three, Uniform Tax Abatement Policy, Section 1.09.062, Definitions, and Section 1.09.063, Abatement Schedule, the City Financial Code of Ordinances. And Mr. Sheeman, you're on.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Mr. Valenzuela. Back in October of 2023, Council renewed the ordinance allowing for tax abatements for certain companies, either relocating or expanding in San Angelo. Staff after that time was approached by a number of companies that either fell outside of the rather limited number of industries that were authorized under that ordinance or were not aligned, and our ordinance was not very well-aligned with the county at that time. So, we took a look at it, and we're making some recommendations here. Also, the previous ordinance sort of locked Council into some pretty strict guidelines as far as what the abatements should be, and so we tried to, at the same time, in this revision, give Council a little more flexibility in what they can approve on a case-by-case basis. So, this first slide shows the percentages of tax abatement based on capital cost of a project and also permanent jobs created and/or. What we did on this, these guidelines, is we basically took the old guidelines and set those as the top for each category, but allowed Council to determine a lower amount if they so desired, or not lock you into strictly this, the table that was in the ordinance The City Council, we've also added this statement, "City Council at their sole discretion may determine the exact percentage of a tax abatement to be granted based on the not-to-exceed percentages in the table that was just shown." We feel that that gives you all a lot of flexibility to determine on a case-by-case basis what you'd like to do. The other thing that we did, we looked at eligible industries, and we tried to align this with the NEX codes that are authorized under Section 501 and 505 of the Texas Local Government Code, which governs the Economic Development Corporation. And so, we basically took, there were about four major industries that were covered before, and this opens it up to about 10 or 12 industries. Again, it's up to Council.
Give us those industries, please. Give us the ones that currently exist versus the ones that you're asking to be added.
The ones under Section 501 and 505 include crop production, animal production, forestry and logging, commercial fishing, those are big ones in San Angelo, I realize, support activities for agriculture and forestry, I think that's sort of a big one for San Angelo, mining, which also includes oil field and energy. Utilities, that's one that we actually had a request for. There's a company that's covered by a Utilities NEX Code that is interested in making a significant capital improvement, significant capital investment, sorry, in the city, and they're asking for some tax abatement. Manufacturing, which had been covered previously, wholesale trade, transportation and warehousing, different types of information centers, except for things like drive-in movies and that sort of thing, securities and commodities contracts, investment firms, financial firms in general, architectural engineering and science firms, management of companies and enterprises, which would be sort of a headquarters, if a headquarters operation wanted to move here, we could look at giving them a tax abatement, telephone call centers, correctional institutions, and also, although it doesn't apply, any national defense industry, most of those don't pay taxes, but so wouldn't seek a tax abatement, but nevertheless, they would be eligible under the new, under the revision.
It sounds like to me every industry is being listed under the additions to it. Doesn't look like anybody was left out.
Well, and then, there's also a statement in there now that says that y'all can look at any company. The state doesn't, the state doesn't regulate the companies that you can, or the industries that you can or cannot provide a tax incentive for.
But the state does regulate the growth and end of property taxes that the city's allowed to receive. So, with that said, we are limited to a 3.5% growth in our property tax over existing properties. So, we are controlled and limited in terms of what we can do as it relates to property taxes, and as you know, our property tax dollars, 100% of our existing property tax dollars are used to pay for our fire and our police, plus another $7 million out of sales tax. So, the conversation about property taxes becomes a pretty big conversation to have because it has a huge impact on our ability and resources available to fund our police and fire, number one.
And I think that's part of the reason that staff really looked at this and wanted to give Council as much flexibility as possible, not lock you into any particular industry or any particular percentage. And I guess the way to look at it really is 50% of something is still better than 100% of nothing. So, if Council looks at a particular company and says, "We think we want them here, and it's worth doing a tax abatement," so be it. You have that flexibility, but you also have the flexibility to say no.
And what's the difference, you made the comment that the county has one parameter versus the city, what's the difference between the parameter established by the county versus what you are, what has existed and what you are proposing?
The county, the county is pretty much wide open on what they can do, and we've tried to align more closely with that in the revisions that we've done to this.
I know that Judge Floyd has been, has been a leading force in limiting the amount of tax abatement given to wind and solar people, that his parameters and resolution in terms of what percentage they would give tax abatement was much lower than what other cities or counties have done in the past, and now other cities and counties are looking at what Judge Floyd set as a limitation on tax abatement. tax abatement as a percentage. So how does that correlate up to the 70%, which is the maximum presented here today?
I'm not entirely familiar with the county, but I think Michael Looney is maybe a little more familiar with what they do because he works with those more than I do.
Wouldn't the majority of those, Bob, be?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't the majority of those type things that you just mentioned, wouldn't they be out in the county and not within our city, within our city limits?
The old ones would, but these new ones, adding the additional industries are pretty much within the city limits that would happen in institutions, architectural firms, financial firms. So it's really about changing it from a county perspective to inclusive of a tremendous amount of city.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, you know, it doesn't look to me like, just from what I read and what you've said this morning, that we would really be hurting ourselves any by passing this simply because the wind and solar things are in fact located outside the city limits and we have no power to tax them anyway, unless I'm missing something.
I suppose, that is true. It would be very difficult for a company like that to locate in the city because there just isn't sufficient vacant land available. Maybe another way to look at it too is if the county is offering a tax abatement and we're not, that's a lot of, there's a lot of motivation there to locate in the county and not in the city limits.
But you can't put a solar farm in the city or a wind farm in the city, and that's really the point, is that those are county projects. My question is, we went from this list of people who the county allows tax abatement and we allow tax abatement in the 501 and 505 policies. What you're saying is we now want to increase the type of businesses that would be allowed to apply for tax abatement. So based off of that list that you just read, it sounded like to me almost everyone who wanted to come into the city limits and create a business would be eligible for tax abatement. So tell me what isn't available for tax abatement in the city with this proposal?
With this proposal? Because you have the ability to determine eligibility on a case-by-case basis, there would literally be nothing that I can think of that would be, that would not be eligible if council so desired.
Well, and also based off of the chart presented, where you started a very low valuation, right, as well as low employment or new employments, again, I would say it sounds like, looks like to me, every new business that came into San Angelo right now would be eligible for tax abatement.
Eligible.
Go back to your chart, pull that chart back up. Yes, so if, with a minimum investment of 250,000, one would be able to apply for a 20% abatement if they employed one person.
That is correct.
That would seem to me to be a pretty low abatement, I mean, it seemed to me that the criteria is setting a pretty low standard.
Mayor, you're right. We were trying to give you as much latitude as possible, and so we were trying to push those thresholds both down and up and give you more latitude for the types of companies that you could contract with. Again, the desire was not to restrict council's judgment or latitude, but to open that up so that if council felt like a project was a priority for them, that they might have more opportunity to participate.
Have we had companies, is there an example of companies that might, you don't have to give the name, of companies that came forward and said, "We want to be in San Angelo, but because we, you don't have a tax abatement policy that applies to us, we're not interested"?
Can we talk about? Council may recall, we talked about a battery storage facility that basically is stores energy, standby energy and batteries. That would not have been eligible under our old plan. They have a utilities NEX code. Our previous ordinance did not cover that. And that's sort of what spurred the, for staff to look at what was eligible and what wasn't eligible. And so we thought, well, aligning it with, more closely with what is eligible under the Development Corporation Act seemed to make sense. And that also seemed to be where the original tax abatement ordinance was headed, only they took specific industries only. And that ordinance has been in place, I've been here going on 15 years, that same ordinance has been in place for, since before I got here. So, you know, maybe it was time to take a look at it.
I always think it's important to relook at criteria that has been established. But again, I'm a little nervous at the low level, you know, at the bottom of the, you know, 20% for $250,000 investment and one person being hired. Now, perhaps we'll never have somebody who only wants to employ themselves and invest 250,000 and get a 20% abatement. And that could be, I just wonder if we haven't set a very low level standard for tax abatement, and perhaps all cities do this, and that this would be reflective of cities that might be in competition for these same companies, perhaps. But I just think it opens the door to have a conversation about tax abatement for almost everyone who comes to town and looks to open, because we've also not only done this, but we've also looked at opening the door, the window, for almost every industry that comes to San Angelo.
Mayor.
Based off of those new criteria. And I'm a little nervous about the open, big open door we're talking about.
That is exactly the kind of conversation we want council to have about this, is I feel like this is a little low. That's the kind of latitude we want council to have, the kind of conversation we want council to have. We think this investment's not high enough, or we think this employment's not high enough to incentivize. And so we're encouraged to hear the deeper thought that you're applying to these, these concepts. And if you want to think about it some more, we could do that. If you want to approve something, we could do that. We could approve something, for example, eliminating the top line in this chart, we could do something like that. But that conversation, that thought process that the mayor just went through is exactly the kind of thing we want council to be able to do. I feel like this is too low. I feel like that's not enough employment. And so we're already doing what we hoped would happen, and that is considering seriously what levels we think are appropriate for incentives.
See, my other question, and perhaps it's here somewhere that I don't see, but for what timeframe? Because most tax abatements are only done for X amount of years, they're not done for the life of the project or forever, never, 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 never. They're usually done for, and sometimes on a diminishing basis. For example, maybe the first year's 20%, the second, the year one through five, year six through 10 is 10%, et cetera. So I also don't see presented here what the timeline is attached to these percentages and these statistics. So I'm a little concerned about that as well.
The state limits the tax abatement timeframe to 10 years. Our ordinance as it stands now, and we haven't changed this, has a seven-year cap, but five years from the date of, is it completion of the ordinance, completion of the project?
Completion of the project.
The five years from completion of the project is the limit that our ordinance as it stands now and would continue. That's the limit that we've put on it.
Because the other question I would have is the fine. So let's say someone comes to us, and I'm just going to constantly use the same valuation just to simplify it. But they have a $250,000 investment they're going to make in a building, they're going to employ one person. What other incentives would that same company be eligible for through Cosa DC? So that would be my other issue, is based off of that low valuation of investment, what other requests could they make of Cosa DC to come here?
That would depend on the company, of course, the number of employees, in this case, one. If it was a $250,000 investment and one employee, I doubt that there would be any significant incentive.
I just want to make sure we've thought through this whole process because.
Sure, absolutely.
And I say this again, because of, we want to grow our economy, we want new businesses, we want new opportunities to come to the table, and we don't want to miss out on those based off of having a bad policy or a bad ordinance that's dated and not been rereviewed. On the other hand, I also know what our property tax dollars do in terms of supporting and paying for our fire and police. So I want to make sure we have a thorough conversation about this policy, and I think it needs a lot, I think it needs some more conversation before approved, but I think we have to be realistic that most cities do tax abatements. I'm not sure they start at this level of conversation, and maybe they do. But I'd like to be informed and have a little more information about that before we sign off on it. But obviously, it's something we need to look at and a new policy that we need to address and take action on.
Maybe this is not the appropriate time to discuss it, but is there a feel for what maybe a minimum capital investment or a minimum number of jobs would be before we would consider abatement?
Daniel, I think you wanted to say something before we, I continue.
Mayor, I just want to clarify, you just took the words right out of my mouth as well. I think that there's definitely a benefit, and we're not hearing from the council members that we don't want to do a tax abatement, I'm sure that's not what we're hearing at this point.
No, it's not.
There's definitely a benefit to it, and we have to weigh those benefits. Mayor, you talked about the tax, how this affects our taxes, but we also, of course, have to take a look at the impact economically for the project that we're looking at doing a tax abatement on. This is a really good, healthy discussion, you know, I don't think that at this point council members need to maybe give what the minimum would be. We can work on that. At this point, there's a presentation before us for city council to take a look at, we're getting input right now, and we know that perhaps that number, the first line, is a little bit too low. We may be able to incentivize with other incentives that we have rather than the actual tax abatement. So we can go back and take a look at it and say, "Well, really, we want to concentrate on those projects that would have a bigger economic impact for our community, and what can we do from a tax abatement standpoint?"
My greatest concern is the very broad, broad, broad approach to the businesses that could qualify.
Sure.
Because the way this, the system works is the following. So the first year, let's say the $250,000 building is built, that goes into what we would call new property taxes, okay? But the second year is existing property tax, and we can't grow our property tax base more than 3.5%, otherwise we have to lower the property rate. So first year, we get full valuation as new property, but we're going to reduce that by 20%.
That's a good point.
The second year, it goes into existing property tax base, which we can only get maximum of 3.5% without reducing what we do. So if you look at that bigger, broader picture, I want to make sure we don't make a decision today without really going through some of these statistics and really relooking at the businesses that we're now opening the door to qualify for.
Okay.
And I think tax abatement is part of the game, everybody does it, and certainly the county has been, been very beneficial, has received very beneficial benefits of large projects called solar and wind, and they've been able to give them a larger percentage in year one of tax abatement. But those projects also do not bring to the table new jobs after they're built. They go from perhaps 75 people working on building or 100 people working on the project down to one person being employed on that project when it's completed.
And that is quite possible, yes.
Right, so I just want to make sure we, number one, relook at all the window and the types of businesses that we're now allowing to apply for rebate. I think that, number one, is a question, do we, because it's basically saying every business has an opportunity for tax abatement based off of that list you just read. In fact, I can't think of one that isn't available or couldn't qualify.
Technically, that would, what you're, the case you're stating is correct, yes.
Yeah, so everybody would qualify for tax abatement.
Mayor, let us take this back by committee to take a look at the adjustments and changes that need to be made. I think it's pretty smart to look at it from the perspective of what we're dealing with right now, it's a 3.5% limitation. So how do we tie that into this tax abatement? So let us go back by committee, take a look at it, and come back and do a presentation in city council based on that.
But we know we need to do something.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not, I want to make sure I'm not misunderstood, we need to do abatement at some point, some level, yes, Tom?
So Bob, help me a little bit here. As far as eligibility, is this somebody that hasn't done business within the city? Or can it already be somebody that is doing business in the city but is expanding?
If they, if they were going to expand, yes, they could be eligible.
So every bank, every restaurant, everybody that's on that list that comes out every quarter would actually probably fall under this?
That's correct.
Could fall under this, yes.
So every, I mean, every oil chain shop, every.
Chain restaurant.
I mean, chain restaurant, everything. And I think that's just, I'll just throw this out here and try to keep the short version. I think that's way too broad. I think we have a ton of people that have already made a decision that they're going to be here, but I never want to handicap, handicap our economic development, okay? And I know we're granted a lot of leeway to approve, you know, basically a line item veto, whether we want something to go or not go. My question is, have we ever been passed over, I mean, do y'all have, and this is for you and Michael, have we been passed over by people that said, "No, I didn't get a tax abatement, so I'm going to Abilene," or "I'm going to Midland Odessa," or something like that? I know it's a tool, and you have to have it to play that card to get them to be here. I think a lot of times those decisions are made, "Here, we're coming anyway." But I will agree with Brenda that there's a lot of scope here from side to side that would take people that have already agreed to do it and take their expansion project and give them a tax abatement when it's not really necessary. And I mean, we need every penny we can get to hit our budget. So I mean, I'm just throwing some things out there, but I do think the scope and how broad we've put it as far as eligibility creates some things that I think are unnecessary, all right? They're coming anyway. But, I mean, to me, it's people that you're looking to bring here that would qualify for a tax abatement.
That, I believe that's a condition we could put on it, that it would be only new companies.
And I.
Or a significant expansion, and we could, we could determine that.
You know, but I don't want to, it's like the Seitel Tower thing. I mean, those are existing companies, but it's a huge tower, and they're making a large investment there, and this started, it was the catalyst to this whole thing. So I get the point, but I'm just throwing out some topics that are, I think, if you look at that development sheet we get once a quarter of all the new businesses that have filed, there's several, you know, millions of dollars on there that instantly we would lose 20, 30, 40% on, that I don't, that we, that we wouldn't. I mean, we're basically giving that back, so that's my two cents where.
I think it's too broad and too lenient, and I think we need to do a lot more research before we sign off on something. So I don't think we should be giving tax abatement to everybody, and most businesses, chain restaurants, et cetera, other types of business, look at a city first and foremost. at a city first and foremost because they think it's a city that they can do business in. They find us, we don't find them. And they're looking at us already for an opportunity for their company. So I, I think we need to pull back the conversation, relook at it, have a better holistic approach to this program.
Let me throw a couple more questions in, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Tommy.
I would be interested to know, Bob, you know, how, how many abatements, and I know it's going to vary, it's going to be an up and down sort of thing, but how many abatements have we granted in the past? Have we offered, and it's already been thrown out here, how many have we lost because we didn't offer an abatement?
I don't know that I can answer that, Tommy.
Okay.
Because we don't, we normally don't get that feedback. Michael, do you?
I, I don't believe we have lost anyone because of the tax abatement policy. Again, most of the tax abatement policies that exist and have existed over the past few years is because of the wind and solar farms. They have been the biggest generators of investment and tax abatement requests, and the county would tell you it's 100% of their tax abatement conversation.
Again, as I say, or maybe I didn't mention this, in the 15 years I've been here, we haven't done any.
Yes.
Do, so another question, whether you can answer it now or not, but when you come back. Does a business more often ask for an abatement, or is it more often that an abatement is offered by someone, us, county? Again, you may not be able to answer that now, but I would be interested in, in that.
And as far as the county is concerned?
No, no.
Or just for what?
As far as the city's concerned.
Okay.
You know, to Tom's point, and it's a very valid point. It's a very important conversation. There's that list that we get of every month on expansions, et cetera. People choose to expand because the business they believe is there. They open up a third location or a second location because they know they're missing business. I think what we want to make sure we do is, is understand what industries we might be interested in recruiting that this would be important for, not to just be handing out gifts to businesses that want to come here because the business opportunity exists for their market and/or expand because the business is strong enough for expansion. We, those new taxes, the taxation, property taxes of new businesses are very key to our overall financial property tax dollar conversation as it relates to funding fire and police. And we know now that our property tax dollars do not cover the operations of fire and police. We're having to dip into our sales tax dollars to cover the public safety aspects. So it's a delicate situation between deciding what the right policy is and making sure we don't give up some opportunities versus what we need to do to protect the financial security.
As far as the, how we proceed from here, I know there was a, we had to have a 75% vote to pass it, so.
It would have to be six to approve. I, I think we can just take it this direction and, and bring it back.
Yeah.
And not take action.
Larry had a question or comment to make.
For all five years that that 75%?
No, sir.
Or can that be adjusted?
It can be adjusted.
It could be 1% change every year, could be a different percent, but I think there's.
Yeah, we, what, what our intent was, was to give you as much flexibility as possible. So you could say, if it was a $750,000, I'm just picking that one, you could say, "Well, we're going to do 40% for, but we're only going to do it for three years." Or, "We're going to do 20% for three years." The other thing that, and I don't mean to belabor this, but the other thing that the, that the Development Corporation does is we run a, a return on investment on everything we do. We can run that same return on investment analysis on a, on a tax abatement.
Well, in my mind, okay, the first year, let's talk about the energy storage. That's here. They're not moving it. They've made the capital investment for that to create that. I guess I wonder about why we would suggest a serious tax abatement after we got them.
Well, we wouldn't now, but that's the point. Is there people, many people come to markets because the market is there for their business. People know our city very often better than we do. Because those corporations study us, they know us, they know the traffic patterns, they know the industry, they know the market better than we all do. And they're going to look at us, not because of the tax abatement policy necessarily, but because of the market opportunity. So I think we want to table this and have additional conversation about it, and relook at this information, and come back and bring it back if we could.
I think, I think it's absolutely the right conversation to have, and we might benefit from the experience of one more budget cycle before we make a final decision on this. You know, we're talking about this being a difficult budget year, and we've got some challenges, and the, the property tax is going to be challenged to cover. All those things you mentioned, Mayor. So we'll, we'll take it back and do some more research, and we'll bring it back. We'll, we'll consult with Daniel for an appropriate time to bring it back.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, this concludes the regular agenda conversation and items. So we do not have a closed session. So we'll move into our follow-up and administrative issues. Are there any announcements or consideration from anyone on council at this point for future meetings? Then I would like to have a motion for a German.
So move.
Anybody opposed? I don't hear any comments.